Do roll call please.
Dan and Doug here, Mullen here, Andrew here, Crowe.
Here.
Here.
Moncher here, Kuzina.
Is there any changes to the agenda, John?
No changes to the agenda.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Ed, roll call please.
Dan and Doug, yes. Mullen?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Moncher?
Okay, so the purpose of the meetings is to be looking at our due diligence reports. And up first is Carly Nelson Construction Company, get a call.
Okay, very good. Dan, thanks for being here. Eric, thank you for being here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to these guys. We are, this, we're not live streaming, but we are recording. And Mr. Wagner's gonna put this on MPTV close up at the conclusion. So, Dan and Eric, if you could speak into the microphone, that will be helpful. The reports, the executive summary parts of the reports are available. If you don't have them, they're up on that podium. One from Terracotta, one from Nelson. The, the full reports, or the full, the, the full Nelson report is on the website. It's sixty-seven pages long. It's got all the pictures and everything. So if you wanna look at that, it is, that's posted on the website. The Terracotta stuff is posted on the website as well. So, any questions from board members before we start? All right. Dan, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I think that's on, so, thanks again.
Good evening. I'm Dan Culpon with Carly Nelson and Company. The school district asked us to provide them with some due diligence inspections of the existing buildings on the Iowa Wesley, the former Iowa Wesleyan campus, which we have completed and provided a report to the school district. And I'll go through the executive summary. So, back in June, we were asked by the school district to provide this service. We evaluated really three ma, the three main buildings we evaluated was the John Holland, the John Wesley Holland Student Center, the Howl Hall, and the chapel. We did do a, what we call mechanical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC type inspection in Old Main. We did not do any inspection in the PEO building and the Pioneer building, primarily because those buildings are not slated necessarily for educational use by the school district at, at this time, maybe later, something they can evaluate later. But we tried to keep our evaluation to the buildings that were currently being considered for use. So to complete this, Carly Nelson employed three sub consultants to work for us to help us do this, and they're experts in their fields. So for the building envelope, we used Resource out of St. Louis area. And Resource LLC is a company that does building analysis for the type of windows, doors, roofs, the, the masonry or the metal cladding of the building. They, they look at all of the buildings, the thing that envelops the building that is primarily how it functions, keeping, keeping the cold air out, keeping the warm air, cool air in, and just in primary, just primarily in how it functions. And then to evaluate the HVAC, the plumbing and the electrical, we used IMEAG. And IMEAG has worked for the district before doing not only design, but retro commissioning for the school district on some of their buildings. And then we used the structural engineer, Bishop Consulting Engineers, to evaluate the chapel, and actually only on the chapel. And I'll explain those as we go here. So we, we began our study of John Wesley Holland Building, the student union. And from a, from an envelope perspective, we walked that entire building, inside, outside. It is a masonry structure building. It's brick, it's a brick structural building. And is in fairly good shape. It was built back in the nineteen fifties. It's, it still is in very good shape as far as the brick goes. There's very little what we call efflorescence, which is where you get moisture infiltration in the brick and it starts leaching out. And, and you see the white powder on the brick leaching out. There's very little of that. It appeared that the weeps were working well. One thing we did evaluate and look at very, very diligently, I think, is, is the window systems throughout the building. They're, they're very old, not efficient, would not be window systems you would want in your building today. So if that building does become a part of another project, we had recommended that those, the window systems that, that will be, that will remain be replaced with modern window systems. We evaluated the roof. There was, at the time that we evaluated, this summer was a very dry summer, obviously. There were no known leaks, there were no apparent leaks in the roof. But the roof is probably at its end of its life. It is a, it is a ballasted roof. We did not take any cores of the roof because our recommendation was for the roof to be replaced entirely. And that would be a part of a future project. But at the, at this point in time, the roof is still functioning. It functions well. It just, it's at its, it's at its end of its life. Maybe this is.
Maybe that is. Oh, lost power. Go ahead, Phil.
All right. So, from the inside, we walked the building on the inside and didn't see anything that was glaring that would be a problem. The building structurally is very, very well constructed. It's a, it's a typical nineteen fifties type building. And it has good bone to it, so it's, it would be a good building in the future. The, the HVAC and plumbing might be a different story in that building when we evaluated that. Unfortunately, at the time of the evaluation, we could not run the systems because the control systems was, was down. Can't run partial HVAC systems without control. But we did use a, a previous employee of the Iowa Wesleyan University Maintenance Crew that was a maintenance supervisor that took care of those systems. He, he accompanied us in the evaluation. And we had the local electrician who'd worked in that building all the time accompanying us in that evaluation. So we were able to get their firsthand knowledge of how the systems worked and what was, where the problems were, what was okay. The HVAC system is in its last breath. It is, it's an old two-pipe system with a chiller and a boiler. The boilers, one boiler was not working at all. The other boiler was off at the time, primarily because there was no water running in the building. But both of those boilers are needing to be replaced. If you would stay with the same system, which we would not recommend that. The chiller was definitely, the chiller was definitely beyond its life. And so, you know, if that was to be a part of the, of the building later, that would need to be replaced. A lot of the piping down in the lower level is, at that point, it needs to be replaced. So we looked at that and, and came up with what we thought was a, a good estimate for that, to replace those things, just for consideration. The electrical is kind of a mixed bag in a way because a few years ago, and I say a few years ago, ten or plus years ago, a local electrical contractor was tasked to put in a new service. They did that, but some of the old, I'd say, main panels and sub-main panels in the, in the basement that are still being used need to be replaced. And some of the panels, sub-panels that are throughout the building need to be replaced. They're very old. I think you might still be able to get some type of breakers for these panels, but I, I don't know why we would want to. So we looked at those and said, we need, those would need to be replaced in, in a future project. All of the electrical works right now. It's not, there's not a problem with the electrical system necessarily. It's just that some of the electrical equipment is very old and, and at its end of its life. Then we, we went to Howl Hall, which is one of the newest buildings on campus, if not the newest building. And it's in very good shape. It's in good condition. We surveyed the entire exterior of the building. We surveyed the roof of the building. The exterior of the building's in good shape. There's a few minor maintenance items that need to be taken care of. There's a few windows that, they're insulated. It's insulated glass, which is good. That's what you want. But there in a few, a few cases, the insulation or the, the seal of the window has ruptured, malfunctioned, and that, that glass is no longer operating the way it should. Those panes of glass should be replaced. The roof is in a very, it's not in very great condition. I mean, it's, it's a decent roof, but it's had a lot of patches to it. The patches were not done very well. It's maybe indicative of, you know, trying to put Band-Aids on, on a, on a roof system just to get by. And so we would recommend that, along with the, the student union, that the Howl Hall roof would be replaced at the same time. It just makes sense. Plus, there's some other work that needs to be done there. All of the rooftop units on the Howl Hall are in, are nearing the end of their life. And so it would be our recommendation that those rooftop units be replaced as part of this project. The plumbing systems are, are fine in Howl Hall. They're, they're, they appear to be working well. The electrical system, again, is in great condition there. One thing I did not touch on, but we would have to evaluate, the, the fire alarm system would have to be changed throughout those buildings. So that would be a, a part of bringing those up to code to meet what school districts are required to meet. And then we evaluated chapel auditorium and the chapel building. The roof, we were not able to get on the roof. I don't know if you ever looked at trying to climb on that roof. It's, it's not one, it's a nae nae roof for me. And there might be some people that would enjoy being up there. But we did look at a lot of the features around the roof. The roof looks like it's in pretty good condition. Some of the soffits and some of the, the fascia around the roof system had some issues that need to be replaced. It's just a matter of, in some cases, there's been some exposure to weather and it's caused some of that to happen. One of the issues that that building has is that it has downspouts that are open, downspouts. And so when the rain comes down those downspouts, they should be tilted out away from the building just a little bit to cause, to allow the rainwater to flow down the downspouts. But what has happened is that those downspouts were pulled tight to the building. And so when the water comes down the downspout, it actually flows out of the downspout, washing down the brick. And so I would, we would recommend that those downspouts, some of the gutter system, would be replaced with, with an enclosed downspout. The masonry would need to be taken care of. There was, there's some tuck point that needs to be done to the masonry. And there's stone throughout the exterior of the building, especially in the front of the building, that needs some work to it, to, to make it what you would want it to be for, for a building the, the district would have. It's a beautiful building. It has great features to it. It would be a nice auditorium. We did evaluate the interior of the building. One of the things we did, did discover in the basement, there has been some moisture infiltration through the floor in the basement. That would require the, the, in certain areas, the carpet to be removed, the concrete to be sealed with a, with a moisture blocker or a moisture barrier. And then that flooring to be replaced down there. Other than that, the rest of the, of the floors, the building is in pretty good shape. Some of the old windows inside the auditorium need some repair work done to the trim that's around the windows, especially at the bottom. They've over a hundred years or so. They've gotten moisture in, in those window cavities. And that, there's some work that needs to be done to that. Also, there is some plaster that is falling out of the ceiling. I would say on the, on the west side of the seat, of the auditorium, we were looking at that. I believe that Chad and one of our evaluators were looking at that. Kind of noticed that, that it, the, part of the structure seemed to be lower than the rest of it. We did go up into the attic. We evaluated that. There is a roof truss that has a, has a little bit of a, a break in it. And that's caused it to deflect a little bit. We brought in a structural engineer in to look at that. He made analysis, the pictures of that. I, I don't think we have any pictures in his report. But he made an analysis of it. He said that it is repairable. And so we, we made our best effort, guessed what that cost would be to make that repair as a part of bringing that building into usable condition. And then from the HVAC and plumbing standpoint, everything seems to be in pretty good order. There was, there was only one issue that we were made aware of. The condensing units that are outside the building need to be evaluated by the manufacturer. Over time, Iowa Wesleyan University had some issues with those condensing units tripping off and they would have to reset them. And so I think it just needs to be determined what's causing that to happen and, and correct that. The electrical system in the building appears to be in very good shape, very good condition. A lot of the, a lot of it was new when the addition was put on the building, back in two thousand nine, I believe, two thousand ten, in that area. So it's in very good condition there. Overall, I would say that the chapel is a very well-built, strong building. It's lasted this long. It's gonna last a lot longer. And is in good condition. Just had some minor things that need to be taken care of on the, and it may be, you know, some maintenance that has just been deferred to later. And that's, that's a bad thing, but that happens a lot, you know. You put off maintenance till a later date, and that's, that adds up. All right. We evaluated a little bit in Old Main. We looked at its HVAC system and its electrical system. Really couldn't do a whole lot with the plumbing there. The, I think the biggest takeaway from Old Main is that the electrical system has a, a pad-mounted transformer on the north side of the building. It comes into a couple panels that are just inside the building, a couple electrical panels. Does not seem to be there, there to be one shut-off or disconnect to that transformer. That would need to be corrected over time. There's nothing wrong with the building. The building operates fine. But that is just a, not a current code, not acceptable by current codes and would need to be corrected. So we looked at the student center, replacing the, the system that is currently there just for evaluation purposes, a reason why we looked at this, would cost somewhere in the seven hundred thousand, eight hundred seventy-five thousand range. It is not our recommendation that you would replace that existing system with a like system. There's much better systems out today and much more efficient systems out today than putting that exact same system back. But that would be a consideration for another day for a, a particular project. We believe that the control systems in the student union building need to be replaced. And that would be twenty, two hundred thousand to two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm sorry, two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace that. And then the roof would cost somewhere in the range of two hundred five thousand to two hundred seventy-five thousand to replace that roof. And then a local electrician helped me evaluate the electrical and, and he believes that it would cost somewhere in the range of thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand to replace those panels that we were talking about earlier. In Howl Hall, the roof needs to be replaced. Now it would be about a four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar cost to replace the roof. Part of the problem that, that Howl Hall's, and I did not discuss this earlier, but there is a, there is a problem in Howl Hall with, with leaking in certain areas. And we believe that the problem is, from the very beginning, it had a very, it had a bad flashing design for weeping out water at the high roof. So the, at the gymnasium, you have a wall that extends up to give the gymnasium its height. And that wall is higher than the rest of the roof around it. And the flashing that was done at the time was a, they used the EPDM roofing as their flash. And they flashed it up the wall and under the brick. And that is not a good, that is not a good design. So we would recommend that that flashing detail around the perimeter of the gym be, be corrected. We believe that cost would be somewhere in the thirty thousand to fifty thousand dollar range. To replace the rooftop units with, with the exact same size of rooftop units that are there right now, would cost somewhere between three hundred seventy-five thousand and four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And to replace the insulated glass panels would be probably somewhere around twenty-five hundred dollars to do that. In the chapel, repairing the broken truss, we estimated that to be somewhere between seventy-five thousand and a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The big, the big unknown here is how much trim would have to be reworked and how much plaster would be lost during that project. But it's very fixable. We came up with a plan of how that could be done. And it would be, it would be something that needs to be done. The repair of the roof fascia, the soffits, gutter, downspouts, somewhere between fifty thousand and seventy-five thousand to do that. I know these are pretty round numbers, but there's a lot of unknowns really at this point in time. But that is the range that we would expect that to come in at. And then to repair the floor in the basement, we think that would be, it's unknown how pervasive that is in the, in the basement. It appears that it's in certain areas and not throughout the entire basement. But right now, I would guess that that would be somewhere in the twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollar range. And so that was the end of our assessment of the buildings. In general, we find the buildings to be in very good shape, obviously. Howl Hall is in the best shape and, and, you know, very nice building for, for the school district, if you go forward with that. The John Wesley, the John Wesley Holland Building and the chapel building have a little bit more repair work that needs to be done. Or, you know, in, in the student union, you know, replacement of HVAC systems and electrical, some of the electrical systems, little more extensive, but still very good building, very usable building. We did not see anything that would cause us to say no to that, so, any questions?
Was water on for any, or was it off?
At the time we evaluated, I believe the water was turned off on all the buildings except for PEO building. And PEO, PEO building maintained the water and electrical throughout most of the time.
When you say basement, Dan, of the chapel, that's that office area down below?
Yes.
Concerning the truss work on the chapel, would you recommend that you hold both of those trusses on the end or if you're gonna fix that one, if you fix it a little wider there?
If it looks like... It would be something, I, I would say that we would have the engineer come back and really evaluate. This is, this is the extent of the work that needs to be done. I don't know that I would go into doing too much more than what's required to get it stabilized where it needs to be and it performing the way it needs to be done. Obviously, if you move that, that truss, you may have some other things that are gonna need to be addressed at that time. But right now, it appears that the truss is the main issue. And very fixable, so. And it's probably been that way for some time. Yes.
So if you're repairing the truss, that won't affect the roof? It's a good truss. You said the roof's in good shape.
Yeah, it should not affect the roof. So when you, when you repair that truss, you're gonna lift it, but you're gonna do it very, very slowly. Because you can't just go and jack up a, a, a structure like that without affecting a lot of things around it unless you do it very slowly. It came down very slowly. It needs to go up very slowly. And so what they would do is, we would have to support it all the way down to the basement, which is the way that that would be done. And then begin the lifting process of pushing that, that section up. Once you get it in place, then you would, you would stabilize that, pin it, you know, together with really structural steel is what we would put in there to support that. It'll be there forever.
So the material's failure or was it knocked out?
No, it's the bottom, the bottom quarter of the truss actually split. And so it wasn't entirely split, but there were, so the bottom quarter of the truss is made up, I think, of maybe five two-by-twelves that are, that are pinned together, you know, every so often. At this particular location, I think there's a tension rod going right through this potential, particular location. And, you know, who knows why it failed? I mean, it's, it is a hundred years, plus years old. It may, you know, there may be added weight that was put on there over time that wasn't anticipated. There is a lot of, there are a lot of things in that attic that weren't there when they built the building. So that might have contributed somewhat to that. But the, we, we evaluated the other truss. It looks fine. It's in very good shape. Most of the rest of the structure looks in, you know, it looks in good shape. So I would say that once you fix that truss, it's, it's gonna be done.
Would we have any other questions for Dan?
With the water on, are you concerned about plumbing to the building?
Howl Hall, no. The chapel, I don't believe so. In the student union, there may, there was, well, there are a lot of piping that's associated with the HVAC system that will need to be replaced. There's a lot of leaking. There's a lot of leaking of that. There, we had the maintenance person with us who had maintained all the systems in that building for the last quite a few years. Did not indicate any problems. Chad, do you recall if there was any issues in Howl Hall? Or, I mean, in the, the student union with plumbing?
Not other than just those piping that have been insulated in there. There's too much water inside the insulation.
Yeah.
Corrosion and everything, yeah, that's just, I know they take accountability with the different.
Yeah, right, right. So it's, from our understanding, what we were able to... So it's, from our understanding, from what we were able to visually inspect, it doesn't appear that plumbing-wise, you know, your, your sanitary sewer or your, or your domestic water is in bad shape. And, and keep in mind too is that if that building does become used as a part of a larger project for the school district, there's going to be a lot of walls that will be opened up, exposed, you'll know at that point in time if you've got some issues, and you address those issues when you get to that point.
The three buildings that we're looking at structurally, there's none?
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Dan, thanks so much.
That's will be Eric Harris. Be careful.
Ron, appreciate the introduction. Eric Harris, Terracan, I'm the Regional Environmental Manager out of Cedar Rapids. Been working with the school district for, going on fifteen years, and Terracan has been part of the district for twenty, twenty-five plus years, so really appreciate, you know, you guys and the continued relationship here, so. We were retained by the school district to help with some of the environmental attributes of the due diligence for the former Iowa Westland campus. So the first task that, that we took on was completing a Phase One environmental site assessment. In layman's terms, it's basically an environmental book report covering the site history, and what we're looking for are recognized environmental conditions. So the presence or likely presence of hazardous substances or petroleum products that may affect the property or the perceived condition of the property. So that's, you know, like John said, available on the district's website. It's probably four hundred pages, and if you're looking for something to read in your spare time, there's some pretty cool sandboard maps and other historical attributes that go into those. So obviously with the Westland campus, everybody's well aware of the long history and the tenure, but a few things that I personally find interesting, some of the other site attributes that were on that particular piece of property and specifically the southern portion of that property. So it was utilized as a kind of form of rail operations turntable. There was two oil companies on, on that piece of property, and obviously those types of entities are known for handling petroleum products and other environmental sensitive chemicals that may impact the site. So we had three recognized environmental conditions. We also became aware of a, another document that the Westland University had, they had a Phase Two environmental site assessment. So the Phase One is not intrusive, we don't sample soil and groundwater. The Phase Two are limited site investigation, where we go out and collect soil samples. And the Westland University had a previous site assessment done where they sampled soil and groundwater, had some concentrations of diesel and some high arsenic concentrations in soil and groundwater. So we called that out as a recognized environmental condition, and there were some other things that we, that we came across, one being underground storage tanks, the potential for underground storage tanks. We looked at old historical maps, sandboard maps, and on there, there were underground storage tanks, so we called that out as a recognized environmental condition, and that was not previously assessed by the previous company that did the work for Westland. And then obviously, you know, the adjoining property with the power generating station, additional adjoining site use, we also called that out as recognized environmental conditions. So the whole purpose of that Phase One is to gain all appropriate inquiry, and it's required by lending agencies typically, and it's kind of a gateway to everything environmental, is to prove that you didn't contribute to the environmental conditions associated with the site. So that's kind of step one. Step two is the limited site investigation, where we actually go out and perform soil and groundwater sampling, to, to identify if those recognized environmental conditions are, are in fact there. So Terracan advanced in a very short order, I think we had thirty days, to, to do the limited site investigation and scavenge borings and also do the asbestos piece that I'll talk about next, but very short turnaround on this, but we advanced four borings on the site, targeting those recognized environmental conditions. There you go, John. And you can see here too, we also did some GPR, so as part of our safety protocol, we, we have some very sophisticated tools, ground penetrating radar that we scan all of our borings, and we want to make sure that our drillers are safe and not drilling through power lines or gas lines, obviously that's a big no-no, but we had our crew actually go out and, and survey a little bit farther beyond on that Borang One, and we did find some potential anomalies associated with where those tanks might have been at one time, so that is something to keep in the back of your mind for future site developments. You know, those tanks still may be in the ground. So as part of our soil and groundwater investigation, we looked at both soil and groundwater for volatile organics, T E H, total extractable hydrocarbon, which is basically your heavy diesel's oil, and also poly aromatic hydrocarbons and also river metals. Like I mentioned, the previous investigation had hits of diesel and arsenic. Arsenic is very common and is also one of those river metals. And we also found kind of the same thing, so in Borings One and Two, we had high arsenic concentrations above the statewide standards, and they recently changed, not recently, but in 2017 changed those standards, and we are over the statewide standard. The other analytes that we, that we included in our suite, we had diesel and Borang B2, which is, you know, right where those tanks were, so to be expected. And then in groundwater, not all the wells produce water, obviously it's been a very dry year, so we did have river metals in, inside that groundwater, and it was below the statewide standards, so. What does that mean from an environmental perspective, from a soil and groundwater attribute? You know, based on our opinion, we don't believe that there's any additional assessment at this time. However, we do recommend a soil and groundwater management plan due to those high arsenic concentrations and the T E H, so basically if we want to go into construction, we are going to be developing on that area. You know, that plan is to help alert contractors, the earthwork folks, you know, what happens if we do encounter, you know, sticky dirt per se. And then the other recommendation was obviously to set aside some potential funds for dealing with those underground storage tanks that still may be in the ground, and Department Natural Resources does have some ones available to help folks with orphan tanks, and you know, that is a service that we can, can also help with if they are ever recovered. The next piece that we were tasked with in a very short order was to do asbestos and regulated materials surveys on, on those six buildings that Dan mentioned there, and we're kind of going to talk about some of the same things that, that Dan covered there, but from an asbestos standpoint and regulated materials standpoint. So Terracan completed asbestos surveys, I think we took like almost seven hundred samples between all the buildings, so kudos to our crew of four, they did a really great job getting this done. So we also did lead paint testing, just as a, as a screening to help contractors, you know, as part of any renovation activities, to help, you know, take those precautions, and also the regulated materials piece, asbestos, not asbestos, excuse me, the PCB ballast, mercury light tubes, battery backups, things that people don't think about, door closers that may have oil in them, so we inventoried that just to help kind of the construction process and demo process down the road, so. As far as asbestos goes, Chad and I walked the buildings, I don't know, maybe in September or so, and I kind of threw out a ballpark estimate at that time, and just kind of based on what we saw. So I'll just go over really briefly what we found in each of the buildings, and it's on your guys' summary along with some abatement costs that we've generated. So the Activity Center, we did not find any asbestos, which is great, not to be expected in your building, so that's nice. Starting with Pioneer Hall, a little bit of pipe insulation, T S I does stand for Thermal Systems Insulation, Chad, sorry I didn't make that abbreviation. Found a little bit of that, not too much of a concern with, with that material, if the linear feet, a little bit of cleanup in the, in the basement crawl space area. And Dan talked about windows, so in a lot of these buildings, we tested window glazing and the sealants around the frames and brick wall, and a lot of those did come back as asbestos containing. So obviously if, you know, we are going to be replacing those, that's going to have to be done by a licensed abatement contractor. Regular contractors don't have the proper licensing and protections for their stuff. So we had, had some windows there at Pioneer Hall that, that had some glazing on them. Moving down to Old Main, not too much there either, we had one sink under coating, a lot of people forget about the sinks, metal sinks have a coating on the bottom of them that typically has asbestos. And then we had some window sealant and, and door sealant, so you know, there's quite a bit of that on each of the windows, I think there's seventy-five windows and four doors, so we are going to be replacing those, that's a pretty big cost to scrape all those down, get the brick wall clean so that the window can be replaced. One other consideration too, based on our experience, and I'm not sure if Chipo's looked at any of these buildings, but based on some past projects, you know, Chipo really looks hard at windows, and you know, there's been a few projects we've been involved on that kind of put back a percentage of windows that have been, you know, basically baited with lead and asbestos, and then they give you another percentage to put in newer windows. So that is one other, you know, kind of consideration that we have to also be thinking about here too. University Chapel, moving down the list, didn't find a whole lot there, obviously there have been some pretty extensive renovations in that building, found a little bit of wall sealant and window glazing there as well. Memorial, so kind of jumping back to the roof discussion, so we did not sample the roofing on this particular building, because the district is assuming that it's going to be asbestos containing, so that is one, one roof that, that we didn't sample, but we did kind of throw out a potential abatement estimate for that, and that's covered there. And then, you know, quite a bit of floor tile and pipe insulation in that building as well, in Memorial. Student Union is, is, you know, kind of as Chad and I walked through, I said this one's, this one's going to be the big one. Union had built-up roofing that we're calling out as assumed as well, and asbestos insulation board up on the ceiling, so that's a pretty big abatement item, along with some substantial vinyl floor tile. And then just some other miscellaneous items, but the big one there is also the windows too, so those are some pretty big window assemblies on that Student Union building that have both asbestos, sealant, and glazing. So that's a, you know, potential coordination issue, you know, as we move to natural construction. And then we also provided a rough estimate for the regulated materials. So total cost that we recommended earmarking, based on our experience, and, and we've bid out a lot of these, so I maintain a kind of a running total, so the low end is four hundred forty-one thousand, and the upper is six hundred sixty-two, so when we bid these types of projects, you know, it really depends on contractor's availability, manpower, and how aggressive folks want to get during these abatement projects, but it's kind of right where my initial thought was, and that comes out on paper that same way. So those are the abatement costs. In addition, the school also would have some asbestos obligations, do the asbestos emergency response act, AHTA, so the school district would need to do an inspection within thirty days of taking title to the assets to be in compliance with AHTA. So we maintain building management plans for each of the school buildings currently, and these buildings would need to be added to that list, and we already have a very good jump start on that, and we know there is asbestos, so pretty mind undertaking. And then once we get to construction, demolition, remediation phase, there's also additional AHTA obligations for doing project designs, so any friable asbestos removal has to be done under a project design, and we have to do air clearance testing to make sure that the area is safe to go back in and other contractors, other trades can reoccupy those areas. So looking at a potential cost estimate of eighty-two thousand for that. Other items of consideration that we kind of covered in, in our summary letter, radon testing, so radon is, is kind of the new hot button in environmental, so with the Gene Horcutt bill being passed last year, school districts have until 2025 to get the buildings inspected for radon for the initial, so that is one thing that, you know, you guys will also have to consider going forward, being that these are some older buildings, there may be some potential for additional longer-term radon monitoring and potentially, you know, radon mitigation, so as Dan was talking about, you know, waterproofing and basement considerations, you know, radon mitigation may be a part of that same discussion as well. And there's a lot of unknowns, so putting a price on radon mitigation is kind of very difficult at this stage, so. That's about all I had. Any questions from the board or others in the crowd?
So Eric, when we, a requirement, when we take possession, we'll have to do the AHTA management plans like we have on our current buildings.
Yep, and that's just, you know, a document that helps the, the district maintain those known asbestos or assumed asbestos materials in good working condition. There's a set schedule for periodic inspections and, and just, you know, making those materials in good condition, so, you know, staff and students don't get exposed to asbestos.
Under the Phase Two, the four hole one?
Yep.
You said there's potentially tanks under there?
Correct.
Or were there tanks?
There's potentially tanks there, so in our Phase One environmental site assessment, we look at old fire insurance maps. So the fire departments used to go around and, and hand sketch basically every structure on every block in most communities, and, you know, they would make notes, and on those notes, we found for the nineteen twenties that there were potentially underground storage tanks there, so they're not registered with the IDNR because they're so old. We did GPR scanning to clear our borings, like I mentioned, and also scanned that area, and what we saw is indicative of potential tank basins or tanks.
So in fact, if they were excavated, we don't know how big a footprint that would actually entail?
No, but I'm guessing...
And that would be under Franklin Street and potentially maybe Broadway?
Yeah, I'm guessing there are probably some smaller tanks, maybe five fifty thousand gallon tanks, you know, I would suspect that they'd be larger C store type of, of tanks.
I think we saw the tanks on the map as late or early, as, as late as nineteen thirty, and then maps after that time didn't have a tank on it.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
So the school district, if they purchase all those buildings, that there are buildings that they're not planning to use for education purposes or whatever, are they still required? Are they required to do any asbestos abatement in those buildings that they're not going to use? that they're not going to use right away or?
No, no asbestos abatement would be required. You know, we may recommend that, you know, if there's damaged pipe insulation, you know, that may be a recommendation and that would be covered under that AHIRA management plan.
But some of the costs that you've shown for asbestos abatement includes those buildings that may not
Correct.
Really, they may not be
That's correct.
Done at all.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys.
Eric, thank you. I don't have anything else. That's what this meeting was for, was to go through the due diligence reports. As you guys know, the purchase agreement was, we took that 30-day extension, which goes until, actually, it ended up on a Sunday. And so that's why we're meeting on a Wednesday, November 8th. The Terracotta just, and Eric, Eric mentioned several times the speed at which this was, they were able to get this done, and we really appreciate that. So the, these are completed, the purchase agreement is in place. We meet on Monday. There's really nothing left for the board to do. We approved the purchase agreements. And unless there was something that, per the due diligence, really was glaring and was going to cause a problem, an issue with the board, then we're ready to move on to closing. Would be closing the real estate transaction.
I was wondering if it's possible for Dan to do this for us. But as we look at the three big buildings we're wanting to use, I think one of the biggest questions that people are wondering is, does it make sense to spend this money to bring that up to date? So what would we be looking at for totals with all this information that you've kind of given us? And I know it's for our students. In relationship to what would it be if we built something new? And I think the public is willing to see that comparison and say, okay, this does make sense because it is more positive for us versus the other scenario. And I think that that is an important piece that the board needs to be able to show to the public. I, how does the rest of you feel about that?
I mean, my quick notes here are, even if we call the high side, $3.4 million for Nelson, another $800,000 for Terracotta, right?
And that, Josh, I'm sorry, that's if you're, that's if you're, if you're doing everything to the union, to the
That is everything on the high side, just add it up. And that's just us getting the building and doing the recommendation on there, not adding, not adding anything. This is what it is. Put it in the condition that it's in, but in a workable condition, I would say, workable state.
Plus the purchase price.
Plus the purchase price, which would take you revenue from the bottom. Yeah, I got what everybody asked, yeah, I, most of us.
And I would say at the moment though, as we think about expenses, we would be focused more on how than anything because we want that to be incredibly useful.
I think you're going to focus on, on
How?
You know, on the chapel. And to a lesser extent, maybe, maybe Old Main, maybe that first floor of Old Main. But yeah, I would agree with you. I think that's where the focus is going to be, and it's an initial step.
Are we able to close off from how to the union if we're not planning on using that building for a year, two years until if construction happens? Are we able to close that off and just use how? And just use the auditorium and
You're talking about heating, cooling, that kind of thing?
Yeah, there's separate systems. Out halls are completely different system than the Student Union.
So with that, there is money to help with the repair of the chapel? Is that correct?
I also do this, I'll tell John too, while back. So the EPA has a brownfields program that is also, communities, school districts are eligible for cleanup funding. And we could assist writing a grant for potential asbestos abatement. That's a $500,000 is the involvement of those grants. They're competitive grants and they're actually due up in six days. Not this year.
You say five, but you said the low end?
Yeah.
So potentially all our asbestos could
Correct.
Cover by a grant.
That makes sense.
And I think we can make a very good case with this meeting, with all these university lessons.
So we're looking at the rest of it.
I'm just curious, if we do all of this, can you use the buildings as they are? Or are you needing to remodel to be, you know, somebody said something about knocking out walls and stuff like that. Are you needing to remodel before you can use them after you bring them up to scale? And we still didn't talk about the fire alarm system that he was talking about. Can you just put, so Student Union and Howe, can you just put the new fire alarm system in Howe and then Student Union later, where they are for the year?
Well, currently Howe Hall has a fire alarm system. I believe both of those have fire alarm systems.
That really qualifies for education?
Well, that's what we would have to evaluate to see what has to be done to make them addressable and the functions that need happen for a school building, education purposes, or K through 12 education purposes. That would have to be evaluated, has not yet. But the comment I was making about tearing down walls or opening up walls was relating to if you're going to add on to that building, you know, change the functions of that building a little bit, you're probably going to be getting into some of the walls to create hallways or to do whatever you need. At that point in time, you're probably going to, you will find if you have any issues, which there's no indication that you will have an issue. But if you do, you'll expose some of those things as you go through that process. Always happens when you're doing renovation. I mean, you're, you know, you're going to find stuff in the walls sometimes, so.
But are the rooms adequate for what you want to use them for? Or is there going to be a remodeling cost on top of this and what does that go by?
So just from our walkthroughs, my take on it is there's a lot of big open spaces. I mean, it was a Student Union. So there would, there would have to be an inside remodel. I mean, is that everybody else's day that has been
Not to use the gym? Not to use, I mean,
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If the gym was brought, or Howe was brought up to code and everything, it would be okay for, we can use it. We'd be using the gym, we would have the additional space that we need there.
What about the PEO to move the administrative permit to?
That's what we're looking at the chapel for.
Yeah.
There's still, we, there's some conversation to be had on
Okay, I just assume the PEO, that's for the business office.
We did not evaluate the PEO building.
I'm sure.
PEO building has a lot, has several children with it. For, of course, really, what is accessibility is one issue. It has significant issues with the masonry around it. The windows are in terrible shape as far as they would all have to be replaced. They're not functional. There are some issues with the PEO building there from cost point of view. Something that would really make you question whether you want to use it for that purpose. But as far as, so like in the Student Union, I don't see really, and I'm not going to be for this necessarily, I don't see that there being a lot of work to be done in here until you're, it's part of the plan for something bigger, you know, for a use of bigger things. But the gymnasium, the Howe Hall, all of its spaces are absolutely functional at this point. I don't see you changing a whole lot at all there.
And if you're going to use the gymnasium, you know, would you have concessions and stuff? Is there a place there to add? Is that good enough using the Student Union?
Yes. The lower ones, bathrooms, you know, that side?
You got the ticket office and concession bathrooms, everything. It's something that you can operate on as a
Bathrooms on the first floor and second floor.
Yeah.
I know that building pretty well.
Any more questions? Or does that answer what you were?
That answers most of them, yes.
That's for yearly maintenance costs of Old Main, PEO, Pioneer Hall. Row and Howe, you wouldn't be using it. These buildings are just sitting empty until we decide what we're doing and whatever time period it is. Do you have any idea of yearly maintenance costs for being able to shut down water, close water, shut down heat, electricity? Does all this building pretty much have no maintenance costs? Or what would the estimated maintenance cost be on those? We did have a certain bill on Howe, I don't know what's up with building on, I don't know if you still got them.
Yeah, for utilities. I mean, you're just talking about if you, if you close them out?
Yeah, if they're going to rise whenever for a year, two years, three years, whatever that looks like.
Well, we can't really do that with Old Main. If Symphony is going to continue to use part of that in PEO, that would not be an option.
So that one's going to have continued operating maintenance cost?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what those cost or would be?
What cost, might be utilities? Yeah, we have utilities for a year on all of those buildings.
How they use them, how they were being utilized?
Right, that's, that's, we're not going to see it.
Yeah, I don't expect the lights to be on in buildings from, you know, six in the morning until midnight at least. That's probably not going to be going on.
Then it'll be, then it'll lock.
Oh, if you don't mind, I'm working at the utility office, I'm a CFO. And so if you guys wanted to see, I did reports on what it's looked like since they've been closed on all the minimal usage and a lot of it's just been shut off, but there's been minimal usage. If you could give me that.
That's good, thank you.
In the chapel, it's still thought of as being the, like the symphonic people, the fine arts people utilizing that. Is there any rental or lease, has that been hashed out, discussed out, to be in or?
I think it's just been brought up as a discussion point with the Symphony, but I think there's signed contractor to be in place.
We haven't, I mean, I've had conversations with the leadership of the Symphony, with the leadership of the PEO organization about their desire to continue to use those spaces, which we would like to accommodate. I haven't done any more on those things until we're the owners.
Now, yeah, proper ownership.
Yeah, please, I'm curious about the money. So if the school system has the money today to pay for the adolescent purchase, where do you stand with the renovations and all of what that means?
Yeah, right now in our, our construction fund, which we get the penny sales tax for, we have about $3.4 million in our capital fund, which, again, we use these funds for other projects too. So we have to keep that in mind. But we have a $2 million, I believe in that fund. And so, you know, it totally, we have essentially over $5 million. But again, we don't want to commit at all to this. We want to make sure that we have our other obligations and incentives.
Anything else, Terracotta?
Yes.
Do we know what the other buildings are going to be used for? And would that hinder what we're wanting to do?
I think at the moment, we've really just focused on like getting like Howe up and going.
I mean, like, do we know who purchased the doors and what that's going to turn into? Do we know what, who's purchased Science Hall and what they're going to do with it? Especially if we're going to be doing an educational setting, we want to make sure we've got reputable neighbors.
That is correct. I'm not aware who has purchased the doors or the suites with that at the Science Hall. I can't tell you that the library will continue to be used in an educational capacity. So there is no concern with that.
Cor, has any other questions?
John, I think it's worth mentioning, Wes, since you were cleaning the place.
Yeah, we did a walk, we did a walk through last Thursday. As part of the purchase agreement, we did a walk through of all the buildings. And they've done, they've done a really good job of getting things cleaned out, cleaned up. I think all the board members who were able to go on the walkthrough felt like, like it was, they did a good job with it.
It made a, it made a difference going in there after everything has been removed and taken out and cluttered on, floors cleaned. I was, I was pleasantly surprised. I was
John, you were pleasantly surprised?
A curmudgeon.
I know, so, you know, that's a lot for you.
I was, it looked nice, it, it, yeah.
That's good to hear. I don't think on our end, for the board, that we have any issues with the purchase and everything going on. I think the biggest thing is like what I asked Dan, and that's more of as we move forward with the project, needing those numbers to just kind of make a case of what makes the most sense as we move forward. Any other stuff?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, well, let it shine on us. Yay, we're done.
Thanks, everybody.